Good evening, everyone. We'll call our meeting to order. This is October 16th, 2017, meeting of the Addison Central School District Board. This is in our meeting where we do all meetings with introductions. And Suzanne, would you please be so kind as to start?
Suzanne By.
Chip Malcolm.
Perry Hansen.
Chris Eaton.
Victoria Jettin.
Peter Burrows, Superintendent.
Peter Conlin.
Mary Gill.
Nick Corsten.
Steve Orzek.
Vicki Wells, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services.
Josh Quinn, Business Manager.
Jenny Seater.
And I do know we have three confirmed folks who are not making it tonight. So that's why we're a little small and I know we're not probably waiting on anybody in that case. Uh, okay. Hang on just a moment here. Actually, let's do minutes before we go to public comment. So I take a motion to-
To approve.
That came from Perry, second.
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Any changes or additions? I can't really speak to them, I wasn't here. Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Chris is abstaining, Peter is abstaining.
Me?
Yeah. Give you a vote on that one.
Why not?
Can I ask you a question about minutes?
Yes.
So, um, in BoardPAC, for the first time, I think, we were asked to-
Discuss.
Discuss, or whatever. So, if we have comments, should we put them in that to expediate this?
Can you speak to why we those were posted that way?
I can't.
Okay. Uh, probably need to do that in an open session, not a meeting.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I didn't know if there had been some sort of-
Yeah. We'll talk a bit more about BoardPAC training.
Oh, good. Look forward to that.
All right, well, let's go, uh, let's return to the public comment period now that I see we have some members of the public here with us. Would you all like to speak during our public comment period?
Sure.
And, um, I would just, uh, reissue my caution that, um, any talk of employees of the district needs to be done in executive session.
Absolutely, sure. So, good evening, everyone, how are you?
Good, thank you.
My name's Cassandra Franklin. Um, two meetings ago, Melissa Mitchell and I appeared at one of your meetings to discuss an ongoing bus concern and complaint. Um, we did meet with Peter Burrows on 9/27, and this is just a formal to address that this problem, um, going forward, some conclusions were reached, and we're pleased with those conclusions. So, Mr. Burrows agreed that the Ripton bus route will be safer as he implements and follows the actions that were promised to parents on the memorandum dated 11/11/2016, and specifically, these measures include the installation of a bus monitor, proper use of the camera, and splitting of the bus route. He also agreed that after the recent actions of the bus driver and the number of parent concerns, a replacement driver should be installed in this route moving forward. That has been done. Peter Burrows stated that he would like to see the trust rebuilt between parents and administrators at the Ripton Elementary School, and that he would have conversations with faculty and staff on how to work cooperatively with parents, particularly when there are safety concerns. We agree that we are going to work on our end to rebuild this trust, um, moving forward, and, uh, we feel satisfied with the assertions of Mr. Burrows and how things have been going since that year.
Great.
Just wanted to put that on the record formally, um, so.
Well, thank you for making the trip all the way here to-
Yeah, absolutely. We really appreciate Mr. Burrows and his, uh, time, concern, and effort with this, with this issue, obviously, you know, it was a big concern of ours, and so, we just want to say thank you for that, and, um, you know, put this issue to rest for your agenda moving forward. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sandra. Do you want that whole thing written in the minutes, or just that the concerns were met?
Uh, maybe the three specific steps that were taken, um, replacement driver, camera, and-
Splitting the route. Splitting the route. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys have a-
Okay. Bill's.
So, um, I have the bills. So Ruth and Nick signed for ninety-four thousand nine oh four and twelve cents on October the ninth, and then on October the sixteenth, Ruth and Chip signed for five oh seven, four fifty-eight, seventy-two, which I think makes a total of six oh two, three sixty-two, eighty-four.
When you get a chance, Nick, could you pass those numbers over, please?
That's it.
Are you moving that, that those-
I move that those be approved.
Second.
Do we need to check the math, or do you think that-
No, no, the math's good.
Pass those around, thank you. All right, all those in favor of paying the bills as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Financial shape for anyone. Uh, all right. Hopefully longer. Quick discussion with, um, Peter with some information about BoardPAC. Uh, that's the software we use to keep updated on our meetings, and just a reminder that we had talked long ago about trying to schedule some additional training to get more familiar with the software, ask any outstanding questions, and now you have more information on that.
So, um, we have contacted BoardPAC, they're able to give us a kind of a second advanced training. We have to do this within their scope of the workday, however, so our thinking was we could find two times that might work for the board to come in, um, so you could sign up for one of those times. It would be a, kind of like a webinar, where we would connect with BoardPAC, and they would take us through some of the advanced features, and then we could also ask questions if you're having issues with something, if you want to know how to use something. I think my, my sense from, uh, board members is that everyone's pretty confident with some of the basic features, but some of the more advanced features may, not that it's terribly complex, but I think it would be helpful to get a, a second round of training.
So, Peter, when you say during the, during their day, what's, what hours are we looking at?
They're an hour behind us.
Okay.
So we were looking at, you know, like a, maybe a four to five slot, or a five to six slot on our side. So we'll, we'll confirm with them, our plan was to confirm with them after we, we talked here, and then set up two different times that, that might work for people.
Nobody has any objections to that, it sounds like?
Thank you, that would be great if you could set that up.
And just, basically, we'll get an email saying, hey, one of these two trainings?
It would also be great, it'd also be great to collect any issues you're having with BoardPAC, so that we can front-load the presentation. So if you want to send me over the next week or so, maybe things that you found quirky or not working well, that would be helpful, so I can send those along, or problem-solve them.
We're all getting accustomed to it. All right, next item on the agenda is, um, action on our part on an early retirement incentive. Um, for those of you who've been on the UD3 Board, this conversation has been an annual one where we discuss opening up early retirement incentives. The process is now really extending further to the whole district. Peter has some information?
Well, I was wondering whether it might make sense to move this item after the conversation on board budget parameters?
Okay, that sounds fine. Everybody's looking, because it's going to be part of your presentation-
Yeah, we, we included it in our memorandum, so I don't know what-
All right, great. If nobody objects, we'll move that on to the, to, um, a little later. Uh, all right. Discussion revised, board meeting format. Um, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I understand there was some discussion about the idea that we would make our second meeting of the month a time for committees to meet, and then if time allows, a chance for the board to come together. Um, I sent out what I hope sufficed as written-down proposal of this, and the idea is that when we come back together, we'll come together as a board, the staff doesn't have to be here, and just work on some of the board development issues that we've, uh, talked about, and also, there's a, there's a, kind of a, uh, there can be an agenda we could create of, of board development issues that Sue could help us develop. Anyways, if time allowed, we'd come back together, we're in a bit setting of this, just kind of around the table, and kind of hammer out some of these other issues. And, uh, as time allows, and that would, at this point, until we want to develop what we're doing after committees further, that would be the idea. It sounded like there was support for going ahead with that. Great.
I, I think there was a concern that there might be some issues in the committees that would require further thought-
Yeah.
Reading, preparation, so that maybe some issues would need time-
Yeah.
-to be studied before.
So we will not make it a sort of required committee readout, we'll keep that as our, in our formal board meeting time, and make it more about board development. And of course, those dates will also always be reserved if we have timely board action that we need to take grievances, or whatever it happens to be.
Um, I think the only other, oh, please, Mary.
I just had a question on that. Would the committee still meet at 6:30, and then the, if we had to have issues, we'd do it an hour later?
Yeah.
Okay, just, yeah, that's important.
That'd be really just kind of work time, no, we wouldn't schedule any votes on anything unless it was necessary.
Right. Yeah, that was the other question, um, because the public meeting law isn't warning about an agenda.
Yeah.
If we were going to-
We will always, we will always warn it as-
As we do committee meetings.
As a work session.
Okay.
Yeah, as committee meetings, and then-
Yeah.
Board work session after.
Okay.
With no action-
There would be no action items scheduled, that's right.
And so we would also be thinking about this way ahead of time, too, so that we don't have things coming up from the operational side that need to get to you, um, so we'd be trying to think about that first meeting, really, as the place for all of the operational action items, sorry.
Yeah. And the first meeting in the month, um, is that still going to be the case, that they, that will rotate between outlying schools?
Yes.
And will be filmed by, because if we're taking action, that first meeting, then-
But whether we're filming or not is not up to us, it's up to them.
No, I know that, but I meant relative to just the public involvement, having that access to it.
I think they made a commitment to, they were in Shoreham, so I think they-
Well, I know that, I just am making the point about that part of it, if that's going to be our decision-making meeting-
Yeah.
-I think it's important to-
It will be live.
Yeah.
Good, but we'll move forward for that, with that for November.
During budget season, that may change slightly. I mean, there might be a few, a few being scheduled, either through the finance committee or the board, just as things get more, face-quickens.
Yeah. Pretty much guaranteed for January.
Yeah.
You're already getting nervous about it.
All right, well, on that same topic, uh, do committees have updates they would like to talk about? Uh, I guess we, let's begin, since you folks will be talking very soon, let's talk with the, um, uh, Community Engagement Committee, which is now has a new name based on a new mission.
Spoiler alert.
Go ahead, Jen.
So, we, um, we did meet, uh, last week with Dr. Barz as well, to, um, just kind of discuss what the mission for this committee really is going to entail, um, this year, compared to what it was designed for last year. Um, and so, focusing on the master plan will be a main portion of the work, um, so we're in the super early stages of that. We have some documents to look over and review, and, um, and make a plan for, making the plan, essentially, to, you know, kind of see where we're at, what do we know, what help do we need, what information do we need. So, given that, um, new assignment, we decided that a more fitting name for the committee would be the Planning and Engagement Committee, and, uh, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, so we're, we're all, um, reading a couple of chapters out of a book that Peter got, which is called Master Planning for Schools.
District Master Planning, no?
Yes.
Yes, it's stimulating.
Yes.
And it's not, it's not for dummies.
Yes, I wanted to, I wanted the good notes.
For dummies, it's yellow and blue, there you go.
Okay, spark notes, apparently, what we'd like in the future.
Keep asking for a YouTube tutorial.
Ooh, that'd be good, too.
Have it on, they don't have it.
Rip Notes for Master Planning.
Guess I don't make those.
Anyway, there are plenty of extra copies that-
Yeah. I have them in a bag, if anybody wants one.
I got mine, too, if anyone's need.
No, but we are, I think we are excited to, to sort of, you know, a lot of this came up as we talk about the sixth grade reconfiguration, that as we make these big decisions, they really should be within the focus of a bigger idea and a bigger plan. Uh, policy, Perry, anything to report?
Yeah, we have a couple things. Today, we reviewed the budget development policy that the finance committee presented to us a while ago now, and we will be putting it on the agenda for two weeks from now, for approval by the whole board. It's a five-page document, very clear and very good. We also will be bringing a, uh, more discussion item, which would be students on the school board, and we felt we had a good conversation, but we wanted to talk to the whole board before we kind of went to the next step of writing it even more formally, so everyone will get a chance to give us ideas and so forth. And we also looked at ten recommended policies that the Vermont School Board Association suggests, and talked about them for the first time, and had some ideas, and it'll just be ongoing, we'll come back to them in a month and talk about them, and we'll give you an update. A lot of these are dealing with, um, things like agenda preparation, and the role of, um, the public, and things like that, so. They will be entertaining, probably not as good as, uh, we don't have a book to read.
We'll share.
Won't be quite as good as what you guys do, but-
Dr. Barz might be able to find one for you. I'm sure he could.
It sounds like a challenge now.
There you go.
I'm sure you could.
Development for school boards.
There you go.
Dummy school boards, yeah.
Is that one on yellow and black books?
Anything to add, Chip?
No, I think, you know, it's sort of an interesting process, because a lot of, there's a lot of verbiage in some of these that, and we feel some of them could be incorporated in different ways, or conceptual things could be, some things we feel we don't need to have, but Perry's going to take on the task of sort of, I don't know, not consolidate, but what would be the word?
Rethinking?
Rethink, edit these things. So, I mean, I, I think it was, it was a good meeting, we, we sort of satisfied that we can sort of proceed through this process on these types of things, and, uh, not come up with lots of superfluous things, which don't really apply to this particular. But, but I, I think what the, this, the students on school board, uh, did, came up, come up as an issue, rather than bringing a policy to discuss, we should have that discussion before we are sent back to either write a policy, or, or tweak a policy that's, that's already there, only because this is a different school board than what was, um, what the students were members of when it was UD3, so. So, we felt that that was one of those issues, where the issue gets brought to the board, and then we'll go back to the policy, and then come back with the policy, so.
Great.
Think that's made more sense.
Any other questions for the policy committee? So, I assume you have the UD3 policy to, to look at as well, I assume, for students on, on-
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and it wasn't so much that it was bad or good, it was this conceptual thing, this is a different school board than, because of our jurisdiction over all schools.
And just, question for clarification, you said that we're going to talk about both of those sets of policies in two weeks?
One, we're going to bring to you, we think it's done, and we'd love your thumbs up, and you can ask questions and so forth.
Finance.
That would be the finance one.
The finance, no, I was talking about the students on the school board.
And the students on the school board, we just want a conversation.
Okay.
And, and we'll have some ideas, it'll be a directed one, not, not free-form.
Even within our group, there's a little difference of direction, or how we go about it, or what we should do, and-
And I guess before we get into finance, uh, I'll just say that Suzanne, and Lorraine, and I attended the Friends of Waybridge Elementary School meeting last week, um, just as invited guests, who mostly listened. Uh, it was very nice, very nice to be out there and hear what's going on. Very strong and active group out there that's, you know, mostly raising money, um, and we talked about playgrounds, had actually a very interesting conversation about, uh, school safety, because Waybridge is one of the remain, one of two, I think, schools left in the district that don't lock their doors during the day. Um, and it was very clear that parents were fairly well kind of split on this, um, and, so they did ask us, from our point of view, if it was, you know, whenever they decide there, will a district-wide policy or procedure, um, sort of make it all the same throughout the district, and we did not have an answer for them. But, anyway, it was a good conversation. All right, well, committee discussion in mind, on to our finance committee to talk about the memo you sent, and anything else.
Shall I?
Yeah, you go.
Um, we are really in the budgeting process, we have only some, uh, basic guidelines, the problem is, is that at this point in the year, um, we're not working with solid numbers in a number of areas, um, but we do have a couple of things that have been handed to us. One is the governor's call to level fund, um, all education budgets. In order to comply with that, we are recommending that the board ask the first budget to be level-funded, however, we wanted to warn you that that could result in a $2.2 million cut, um, to funding. We would like to see what that looks like, um, before we, uh, go on with further recommendations, um, as to what the budget is going to be. So, the governor has asked us to do that, we feel that we should at least comply in the first round, um, and see where that leaves us. I don't need to tell you that $2.2 million is a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I think it would be devastating to our school, but we at least need to see what it looks like to make a good faith effort to, uh, meet that, that request. In order to do that, the second thing that we're asking is that, uh, we've seen some projected numbers about offering, uh, unlimited, uh, early retirement, um, offering, uh, and that would be district-wide. Some schools have been offering that on a regular basis. Uh, I know the high school has been offering it, uh, for several years in a row already, um, and we would like to see what that, what that would result in, in terms of savings. Uh, as presented by Josh and Peter, um, they said they have a good idea of how many, uh, a projection, conservatively, how many teachers would take that, uh, on, and the problem is, if that happens, um, how many teachers, uh, in certain instances, like, for example, in the high school, if the entire math department, just for instance, decides that they want to take the early retirement, obviously, we cannot operate the school without a math department, um, and how many of those teachers would need to be replaced? Um, the savings, obviously, for ones that we, that a teacher takes up the retirement, and then we have to hire someone, is much less than if a teacher takes retirement and we don't have to replace them. But still, in the best-case scenario, if a teacher takes, uh, the early retirement package, and we don't replace them, the best we can do is $84,000 per teacher, as, as a rough estimate, right?
Yes.
Um, given that, and given the, should I say, how many, the conservative projection is, or is it two?
We're not quite sure.
I think it's two.
Well, right, um, but it, it's not going to, even if, in the best of conditions, if we get enough people to take it, and we don't have to replace them, it is unlikely to reach the $2.2 million, is, is what it boils down to. Um, but we would like to, we would like to recommend to the board that they offer the unlimited, uh, and see what happens, um, as far as the teachers, you know, it's not just, well, here goes, um, let's just see how many people are interested in, in doing that, and that'll give us a better idea from there. We're still far too early in the budgeting process to make any projections about equalized people spending, and, um, all of the numbers that will come later, so these are just the earliest inklings of what's going on with the budget, so.
And could you describe a little bit what the offer is, what the early retirement offer is?
Um, it is, uh, three, three to five years, buy out, okay.
Well, it's a, there are two options, so there's option A, and then maybe I could just give a little clarity in terms of what the early retirement incentive became as we unified. So, before we unified, we had three separate early retirement incentives, or severance payments, they were, they were mixed. Our six elementary schools, um, outside of Middlebury, had language that stated, uh, some kind of incentive could be brokered between the teacher, the superintendent, and the board, and that was it. There were no other real stipulations there, so that was kind of on, on a needs basis, or a case-by-case basis. Mary Hogan had a separate, separate language that stated there was an automatic severance payment with, I believe, twenty years, or there, it was a certain percentage for a number of years worked at ID4, um, and, and that was it. And, um, that language was folded, was grandfathered into our current contract for current ID4 teachers, the former ID4, now Mary Hogan teachers, so they still have access to that severance payment. We also wrote a side letter for the next two years of the contract, so seventeen through nineteen, this is a two-year teacher contract, which, which provides the board the ability to offer the former UD3 early retirement incentive to all employees in ACSD. So previously, when, when we were talking about UD3 offering an early retirement incentive, that's what's now available just for the next two years to all districts, if the board so chooses. Within that contract language, and if, if Mary Hogan teachers decide, if, if it is offered, and Mary Hogan teachers decide to take the early retirement incentive, the one that's available to all ACSD teachers, they can't combine that with their severance payment, just in those cases. The retirement incentive is, there are two options, option A and option B. Option A is a buying of years to get someone to the rule of ninety, or to the threshold that they need to retire. So that's option A, and it has a different timeline than option B. Option B is either the buying of years, or the payment of $60,000 over the course of four years, $15,000 a year for four years. That, that timeline is slightly later. And so I think our recommendation was offering both options A and option B.
Yes. And so that's what we're recommending tonight, that the board charge Josh and Peter to move forward with a level-funded budget, and to, um, approve that with the unlimited, as the language states in the letter that you received in BoardPAC.
Can I ask another clarifying question? So, when you said to offer it, and, but it's not going to be like, let's see what happens, so what do you, what do you propose it would look like? So how will we have an idea of what it might end up being, without just throwing it out there to everybody?
Yeah, um, there are some pretty, uh, I, I mean, if you've been working here for two years, you're not going to take the, it, it doesn't do you any good, um, to do that. It's going to be mostly those people that have more than twenty years of service, um, and are close to the rule of nine, does everyone know what the rule of ninety is?
Mm-hmm.
Um, that means that, uh, the way, um, Vermont handles this retirement is that a combination of the number of years that you have of service and your age have to equal ninety for you to get full retirement.
Oh.
And so that's what, that's most, uh, to buy out the years, the farther you are away from that, the more expensive those years are, um, and so, only those people who are fairly close, um, to the end of their career, which tops out at about thirty or so, um, those are the only people that really would benefit from, from doing this, so. It, it, that, and then given, given the demographics of who the teachers are, and where they are, and how close they are to those rules, um, we've narrowed it down to, uh, like I said, we don't want to say any numbers yet, but, um, conservatively, there, there's a group out- a group out there that we think would be interested.
I think your question was more, but our action tonight is not a, let's see what happens.
Yes.
It is a committed contractual obligation.
Right.
So in other words, if 50 people sign up for it, we're obligated to, for 50 to follow through.
Right. That's where it seems to me like it is a, well, let's see what happens. Like you're, we're saying, we're going to offer it and we're going to see what happens. How many people is it going to go out to?
If you offer this, you don't, you can't say, oh, you can have it and you can't have it.
Right.
And so we're projecting, as we are with many budget items.
Yeah.
We're pretty sure this is how it's going to play out.
Yeah.
But there's no guarantees.
Yeah.
The option that we do have is that we can limit it. We can say, we're only going to offer it for 15 people and it's done by lottery.
Exactly.
But the recommendation is that we make it unlimited and encourage as many.
Yep. And so another clarifying question. Sorry, I'm not trying to harp on this.
No, no, no.
So I think what I heard was the rule of 90 was, was based on option A, and then option B had something like $60,000 over the course of four years. So say I've been here for two years, and I'm thinking, oh, I can take $15,000 for two years and I can move and teach someplace else. You don't see that as being something that people would want because?
They have to, you have to meet a certain amount of time in the district. So you have to have been working in the district for 15 or 20 years.
Okay.
So before you're eligible.
So would it be more of a retirement age type thing?
Yes.
As opposed to, I'm early in my career, I'm not making enough money, this could supplement my income kind of a thing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that, as I recall, is set in the contract, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The assumption of offering early buyout in a general term for the district, not for the individuals taking it, but is that we then either can not fill that position and thus manage budgetary parts that way, or that the person that we hired to replace them is assumingly going to be cheaper than this near-retirement person. Is that correct?
That's correct.
The trap with that partly is that depending on the teacher who's taking it, you don't, I don't think the best teacher to replace them is not always the cheapest teacher.
We don't generally have a policy that says we hire the cheapest teacher.
No, I know that, I know that. But that's, when we've dealt with all of this type of stuff, I think there is that, because there are teachers who would be great, all right, in some setting that aren't right out of school and are going to save us $20,000 or $30,000 a year because of what they're making.
Absolutely. But I think that in, without knowing specifics, you can only do this, you can only make that comparison knowing the specifics of the case.
I know that.
It would be a rare occurrence where hiring a new teacher would cost us more
Right.
than allowing a teacher to retire.
I, I'm thinking on the other side, that not just the cost, but the quality, okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I, and I think we've had a certain amount of that happening here at the high school. And I think that, you know, Superintendent Burrows has been very mindful of replacing the people that are retiring with high-quality people when that's necessary, not necessarily the cheapest.
Just make, I'm making a point.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. 100% agree with you, Chip.
So for the, for the notes, so option A is buying a number of years to get to retirement age, and option B is just $60,000 over four years. Is that correct? Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
For qualifying teachers.
Yeah. It's a minimum of 20 full-time equivalent years of service, not more than five of which come from outside ACSD.
Yeah. And that's the language from the contract?
Yeah.
So are people?
Another question, just as more on the whole budget. When you say $2.2 million reduction, what percentage is that of our entire budget?
Thirty-two million dollar budget?
Thirty-eight million dollar budget, so it's seven, eight percent.
Oh.
Does, can I ask another question regarding, I mean, that's a governor's recommendation.
Yes.
Understanding where he's coming from, but also from schools' positions, what, I mean, what options do schools have then, unless the legislature absolutely says it's a fixed, all schools have to have level-funded budget? Right?
Yes, exactly. The governor does not, the governor can make a recommendation, the government, the governor does not control education spending. The only thing he can do is, like the last time when he, I will use this term, held the budget hostage and said he wouldn't sign unless it was reopened around the healthcare stuff. But he cannot initiate policy around.
I mean, it is confusing, read, trying to read this as to what the sort of, you know, all this, the education budget always seems to be in trouble. You know, seven to eight cents is going to be what's going to happen this year, and, you know, the explosion of budgets and I never, yeah, some of it's scare tactics, some of it's a lot of different stuff in it. But I think it's right to go and look and see how painful that is, okay? And it's painful because everything else goes up, and how can you restrict systems when every part of that system is by contract going up? There's no way to cut things unless you cut.
The other complication is that it's per equalized in students. So you have to take the number of students into account, too.
Right. And they're going down.
We're expecting it to go down, and the labor contract always, 80% is the rule of thumb that people use, 80% of our costs are labor costs. And every year, we're contractually obligate, well, not contractually obligated, but we have a contract in place that requires us to raise the amount of money we spend on personnel, so.
Right. No, it's just.
But it does give, let me say it this way, that would, that would hopefully be the worst-case scenario we would ever look at.
Right.
And that way, we know where the bottom is. You know, the sky's the limit on the top, but at least it gives us a floor. What would it look like in the worst-case scenario?
I know several years ago, if we went above the recommended spending, there was a penalty to the district. Is that no longer the case? So if our school board ends up increasing the budget beyond level funding, there's no penalty to us?
I think you're talking about the double tax over a certain.
Yeah. The penalty at this point is gone, right?
It was gone, but I, I was, Josh and I were talking about this today. I, I wonder whether it's, I believe it might still be in statute that raising by CPI
Yeah.
was the last, before they started, I mean, last year, or two years ago, they did the variable spending allowance.
Mm-hmm.
So every district, based on how much you spent, got a certain leeway in terms of raising costs. And then last year, it, it changed back. So I, I don't know. And Josh talked to Brad James, who said he wasn't sure, right? Or what did Brad say?
Yeah, they, the AOE isn't even talking about that at the moment. All they're talking about is level funding. And all they're talking about is the $50 million budget gap in the education fund. And that's where that five to seven cent
Right.
increase comes. So, yeah, they haven't even gotten to the other pieces because they, they know, they also don't know what is going to happen.
I do think Mary answered your question. I think that the double tax penalty is there. And I should know this.
I think so, but we're also, we are also protected that we cannot increase more than 5% because we did the accelerated merger. Our tax rate cannot increase by more than 5%. So, which is like eight or nine cents, I think, when you look at it.
Are we looking for a motion on the specific? Please, and I guess the question is, do we want to take them one at a time, or are people okay doing them together?
Doing them.
Welcome any motion.
All right, I'm, by then, together, what's the other one besides the early retirement package?
Level-funded budget.
Level-funded.
Okay. I would move that we approve the recommended early retirement offering as described by the finance committee.
And?
And I'm going to listen, I'll take the other part.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to.
I'll second his motion on just that alone.
Okay, great. So all those in favor of offering unlimited slots for options A and B as described, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? We still have the first recommendation from the finance committee, which would require a motion, and.
So moved.
Barry has moved that we develop a budget with a goal of achieving level funding on a per-pupil basis. A second?
Second.
Agree with the second. All, any further discussion?
I just want to make clear, because the way I heard it was that this was something that we were doing because we need to see what that looks like to make an immediate decision. It's not necessarily what we're recommending we do.
The recommendation is develop a budget with the goal of achieving. It's an objective.
Starting going.
It does not, it does not in any way commit it, commit us to that budget or anything. It's just some direction for the staff to go out and, okay, now here's what you need to do. And then they'll come back with the numbers. So.
Who seconded that? Sorry.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Nay. All right. Anybody want to abstain? Thank you, Finance Committee, for your work on that, and good luck.
Is there a timeframe for like, when you're offering this, so that you would have a sense by a certain time?
We'll, we'll offer it immediately, but in the contract, I think they have through February 1st to accept. I believe that's the date.
It was in the contract, super.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I'll plan to communicate with, with teachers this week. And, you know, I think people that are, that are going to take it, hopefully will step forward earlier because that will help us in, in getting through this challenging budget process.
Right.
So that will certainly be a request and ask.
I missed, what was the date, Josh, you said?
February 1st.
That was, that's for option B. Option A is, I mean, the thing is, if you offer A and B, B has A and B in it, so.
Right.
I didn't write it.
All right. The next item on the agenda is to talk a bit about the Vermont School Boards Association resolutions. And I'm going to the VSBA meeting Thursday and Friday of this week. And the VSBA is, is kind of based on some of the stuff that went on last year with the teacher healthcare, and that they had a resolution on that, but they had to sort of do it late. What they're really trying to do at the VSBA is put resolutions out there early to be discussed at their annual meeting. And what I'm looking for is direction from this board, as how this board would like to vote, take no position or take no position on some of these resolutions. I thought maybe we'd just talk about them one by one and get a quick sense of where the board might stand on this. So there, the Vermont School Boards Association Committee, Resolutions Committee, came up with several proposals, which we have here. So the first one really deals with school district innovation zones. And it just says that the VSBA supports legislation authorizing the creation of innovation zones to exempt supervisory unions and/or districts from specific regulation and policy in order to create models of world-class educational systems that can be scaled across the state. And I think that an example of this would be, maybe a school district would like to get out from under certain teacher licensing requirements, or, or to not have, not necessarily always have a licensed teacher doing what they're supposed to do, or licensed in one area, be able to teach elsewhere. That's just an example. So the idea would be, they are supporting legislation that would allow these innovation zones to be created and allow some school districts to get out from under some regulation. I don't know if anybody has a strong opinion on this. It basically seems like a good idea to me.
Steve? I obviously have a strong opinion against this. Actually, what they were saying in the meeting was, this sounds like it's, it's not that I don't trust administrators, but it allows administrator, would allow, in that case, administrator an extreme latitude to be able to hire someone that they
They think is qualified.
rather than someone who has been through an objective process of licensure. So I think that's a dangerous thing to do. These are, teachers in our schools are highly-trained professionals. I think this is a dangerous door to open. It also could result in a downward spiral of not necessarily us, because I would hope that we would act responsibly around this. But surrounding schools becomes a spiral into, well, let's see, we can have this person come in and teach this subject. And really, this takes the, this takes any kind of responsibility off of the table. I, I think that those, I think that that legislation is there for a reason. And this is far too vaguely worded to say, you know, okay, you know, have at it. I, I think that this is a huge end around. And it's not specific enough, and it certainly says, from specific regulations and policies, if you leave that kind of language in there, that opens a floodgate, in my opinion.
Further conversation?
But I don't have it in front of me. But it's basically saying to write legislation to do this. So wouldn't the, the legislation be able to be more specific?
If, if the, if the legislation is bad, why don't they change the base law? Why do you have to have this law out there that says, and we can get rid of any law we don't like? If, if there's a problem with some regulatory or policy initiative, then pass a law about that policy initiative and make it universal for all schools, that that regulation no longer applies.
So am I, the legislator, this would, you know, stimulate the legislature to develop a law that would allow, they would apply for this type of very, variance, basically, correct?
Good way to describe it, yeah.
Yeah. And then would be held to that over a period of time, where somehow the legislation would have to, to address. I mean, I, I hear some of those concerns. In medicine, it was the same thing. You didn't want anybody to come in and do the job because they weren't certified, qualified, or whatever. This came up in the late midwife operations all the time in my business because of that whole balancing of, of regulation. However, I think it would depend a lot on the legislation that's written as to how, how it would address. I understand your concerns, but I, I think to blankly.
Yeah. I mean, I think in, if we look at our district situation, maybe I'm interpreting it wrong, but say, you know, there's a professor who no longer is a professor and would love to come teach at our high school, would be ashamed to have to say no because he wasn't certified. You've got the PhD who has years of experience teaching. I think I'd like the administration to have the ability to make the judgment that this is a person who would make a great teacher in our high school and not be beholden to, you know, a regulation that might not be appropriate.
Process.
What's that?
Would not be beholden to a licensing process?
No, that the administrator would be, would have the freedom to, to make the judgment that this person would be a good teacher.
And you don't see a possible abuse of that to say that, well, this person is good at, you know, doing this thing. They don't have a license, they don't have any training as a nurse.
Not, I mean, generally, I think we try to have.
But they're a lot cheaper.
I think we could get bogged down in hypotheticals very simply. And I'll just sort of, I think Steve and I will go back and forth here on, on this, on this and the other resolutions as well.
Probably.
But Peter, it does say, create models of world-class education systems. So that's what I thought it was going towards.
Well, I, I, you know, it's not, it's not just about hiring non-licensed teachers. It could be about many different things. And I think that people or school districts would have to apply for this. And I think that the scenario that, you know, a school district would apply so that they could do an end run around hiring qualified people, I hope would not be a reality. But I also think that, to Steve's point, that if something, a policy or law is bad, just get rid of it. To me, a special innovation zone allows you to test what's working and what's not working before doing that. So for that reason, I'm in support of it. And I will do a hypothetical, just in our own circumstance here, if we ever do a six-through-eight program because of the way I be. elementary school teaching, and that would be a place where maybe a variance would be appropriate, but I'm falling into my own trap of creating hypotheticals, good and bad.
I'll just comment, I agree with Peter, because there is a way to get a license, even if you are a professor at the college, right? It's a, it's a process, and it's, he has the credentials, he or she has the credentials, and it's just going through that extra step of getting a license through the Department of Ed. I think it's a protection, and I think the reason that was set up was to do that, so that we weren't getting people who would just kind of say, oh, I, I think I can teach accounting, I'll go do that. And then the superintendent might be just saying, well, I've got to hire somebody, and this person's coming in pretty cheap, and he does have some credentials, but he hasn't passed the licensure. I think it just opens too many doors for unqualified people, inexperienced people to come in and be in charge of a classroom with kids. So I agree with Peter. You need that licensing. Steve? I'm sorry. The son is Peter, and I always call him that, so I apologize.
I was getting, it's a lot of Peters.
He knows that.
I was losing. I knew what you're saying, but I didn't know what you're saying.
Chris?
So I think if it was specific to licensure, I think that that's a, I think the fact that it is vague makes it kind of more interesting to me because I think there are places that we could use some innovation in small pockets to experiment with some things, so, and I hear the concerns. I also think that that's what the legislation is for, is for it to get argued about by legislators to figure out if they think that that's a good idea or not, and to limit it or to expand it in the areas that it makes sense. So I would support this as it's encouraging, looking at ways to possibly create pockets of innovation, and it's not specific to just that one detail.
Right. I agree. I don't feel like the law is changing that requirement globally at this point. I think it's looking at options and innovative strategies within a model that includes that possibility, and that may then turn into a state law is what I think I'm seeing, because it talks about the scale, increasing the scale of it based on how these models are. So I don't feel like this is putting our district at risk by allowing this because it's not directly affecting our district unless we applied to be one of these, what do they call it?
Innovation zones.
Innovation zones.
Innovation.
Just to give folks a sense of the process, you know, the V S B A passes a resolution, encourages this, it then requires a legislator to sponsor a bill that says this, and then it requires that bill to be taken up by a committee, and then through the whole rest of legislative process. So it's a long, arduous process.
One last, just, and then I will yield the tour. Innovation zones, is there no innovation that we can do at the school that follows the legislative process that we already have? Is it necessary to experiment on our children by stepping outside of these laws?
We'll take that as a rhetorical question. That is my final word. So I would sort of like to have a vote on these. I'd call them, we can call them binding or non-binding, it's up to me once I get there, but I would follow the directive of the board. Whether I agree with it or not.
You've got to listen to what they say there, too, right?
Could I say that...
Oh, I thought that was the last word.
This is not about this resolution, but about what you were saying about the process. There are a number of school boards that have been divided on these various ones, and they have said that they will vote with the majority of the vote board and not say that there was a difference of opinion, saying that it was not a unanimous vote to adopt or not adopt or whatever.
Well, now you're getting into a territory that I don't know, and that is the voting process at the V S B A meeting. You know, I'd be happy to state our vote.
Okay.
Yeah. If the opportunity is available.
So Peter, are you looking for motions on each of these proposals?
I guess we'll do that by motion. I was thinking about a straw poll, but we can do it by.
Straw.
We have a procedural issue on, if we just do a straw poll. Let's do it by motion.
Okay, just...
Let's have a motion to approve. Second?
Second.
From Nick. Okay. All those in favor of the, of us supporting the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
All right, so we got two on that. All right. Let the debate continue.
Oh, dear.
Okay. Number two is, be resolved policymakers should convene a task force, we're good at study committees, to establish staff to equalize pupil target ratios for specific categories of schools and school district configurations, and develop recommended strategies for districts to help them meet targets.
Actually, isn't that the third resolution?
That's three.
Yeah, we missed one.
You missed one.
Sorry, thank you. I'm like, what am I not seeing here?
Oh, all right.
Health insurance?
Health insurance. I didn't think there'd be any debate about that.
Okay.
In order to ensure equity and sustainability and healthcare benefits available to all school employees, the General Assembly should adopt a process for negotiation of healthcare benefits at the state level by a council of school board members to apply to contracts that expire in 2019. Steve?
So moved.
Again, I thought that part of our process was to respond to local conditions, to have as many things on the table that we can negotiate on. When we come to negotiations, the two main things that we do usually have the most discussion around are healthcare and salary, and you can trade one for the other, not with this. You are giving to, not my appeal here, but a group of school board members that might be from totally different places, the ability to set what our healthcare costs are going to be. I think it's a bad idea. I think we are giving up autonomy.
But if I understand, it also means that doesn't, so if you want, so if they offer one policy, say, across the state, so teachers in Burlington might get paid X, and their cost is, say, $200 a month, but then teachers in a lower-paid district, their costs are still the same, so then, isn't that the way that they were talking about developing it? So then it actually kind of like hurts the districts whose teachers aren't paid as well? They're losing or having to pay more money for their taxes.
I think the better way to describe it is it would provide a same healthcare benefit across the state. It wouldn't necessarily be a policy because, because public school employees can choose from a menu of four different policies. It would be a financial package that would be the same statewide.
And the assumption, because that came from the governor, too, okay? The assumption was that that would save, it would reduce healthcare expenses to the individual and to the districts?
Well, so I'll give my pro argument here. Originally, in this past session when the governor got involved in this, the idea was it was taking advantage of the opportunity because all public school employees were moving to the new healthcare benefit, and the idea was is everybody moved to the same benefit. It was a guaranteed savings of this much money.
Right.
Now, of course, we are already going to be there. We, the new healthcare plans would be in place. And, you know, I've obviously thought about this a lot, having been involved in the original debate. You know, for that reason, I supported it earlier, but now we are a step further, where these policies are now in place and they've already been negotiated. And for me, the more compelling argument is that the real savings in healthcare to be found in the coming years is in keeping premium increases lower. Now, when the actuaries go to work, and we can get into a whole debate as to whether the actuary theories are good or not, I sort of trust them because they know more than I do, the idea is is that if everybody sort of settles in this one area, they can accurately predict what the premium increases would be. Well, we've got however many hundreds of school districts coming in in all different places, and therefore you don't have a consistent settlement pattern that allows the actuaries to say, we believe that, you know, the increases will be this much. The original budget, you know, the original philosophy, or the original premium estimates that we all use to negotiate from were really based on this model plan that, for one thing, would have included all public school employees opting for a health savings account, because those experts in the field feel that that would have an impact on utilization and behavior. Nobody settled to an HSA, they settled to an HRA, has a different impact on rates, and then there were first dollar contributions that were all over the state. So it just made for a much more different calculation, and so my feeling about a statewide benefit is that it would allow for better cost control of premium increases and more accurate budgeting of them. Philosophically, I also think that an equal, an equal benefit for all public school employees is a good thing. That's my own personal philosophical opinion. I went longer than Steve, so I'm...
I think this is another thing that the governor is using to shift healthcare costs to teachers. Teachers are the losers and always will be in a situation like this. The increases in premium, premiums will be borne mostly by the teachers. Creation of the HSAs and the HRAs have increased the out-of-pocket costs to teachers across the board. The development of the new VHI plans, every single teacher in the state took a hit on health insurance. I know this looks good for the board, but you're hurting your teachers again.
Chris?
Yeah. So my personal take on it would be that that's, that, I would disagree with the last member of the board that spoke on the facts of that, but I think there's a little bit of conflict of interest in this discussion, so with where we're sitting right now. So I've moved to take a vote on this.
Okay.
Moved to approve.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve this resol, or to direct our delegate to vote in favor of this resolution. Need a second?
Second.
Victoria, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
No.
No.
All right. Now we are moving on to the task force. I read it. Any thoughts on this? I would welcome anybody's thoughts on this. Well, task force generally doesn't hurt anybody.
Doesn't it hurt you, guys?
I don't think so.
But I mean, the number, it's, we're talking about per pupil, we're talking about ratios.
Well, I think that the goal here, and I don't remember, there wasn't a lot of conversation about this at the meeting, was there, Steve?
No.
Is really to look at, you know, is it fair to say that, you know, a small, a micro district, as we should be referring to them, should have the same adult student ratio as a big city school? You know, Burlington may be 23 to 1, but you're not going to get 23 to 1 in Ripton. And so I think the idea is to come up with a more scaled setting of goals for student teacher, student adult ratios.
That's not what the resolution says.
Oh, probably give a task force, well, it's to, give me a task force, first of all.
Okay.
It's not to do anything. To establish a staff to equalize pupil target ratios for specific categories of schools and school district configurations.
And the whereas?
The whereas is above.
It does say that the idea is to move to a standard of one adult for every five students, and that $175 million in savings annually would mean that we would have to cut staff.
Yep.
Well...
It's a recommendation.
We, as a state of Vermont...
Yeah, we could always include students.
If you read the next resolution in combination with that, it says in order to get help on offering early retirements, it would be by following that, the, yes. So it does, it does add dollars to that.
Yeah. I would look for a motion to support this. I'm moved.
But you, Perry?
Perry? Victoria, was that a second? I see you there.
Sure, sure, I'll see.
Okay. Resolution number three. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Yes. Opposed.
Okay, let's do a show of hands here. All those in favor, say, raise your hand aye. We got a one, two, three, four, and those opposed? I'm sorry, five, one, two, three, four. All right. So we may call that, is six, four, there's three, and then there's a task force ratios. All right. Then we have the study of state-funded retirement buyout that conditions rehires on achieving ratios. Be resolved, the V S B A recommends the creation of a stakeholder task force to explore the advantages and disadvantages of establishing a state-funded initiative in support of early or on-time retirement. Two conditions of a district's participation in the initiative would be a commitment to meet staff and student ratio targets by reducing total personnel through the retirement program, and a commitment to sustain these savings through future budgeting processes.
Really, I mean...
It's basically asking this to start funding early, early retirement buyouts.
Is it retroactive?
Yeah, I know. Well, actually, let's say again, it is to establish a task force to study the advantages and disadvantages.
It seems a little, a little too little, too late.
Yeah.
If you're, if you're keeping your house in order, it seems like you could...
I mean, I think the reality of this becoming a reality is anytime soon. It could be challenging at best. Probably doesn't hurt to support it, but it needs to become legislation first. We're trying to cut down on task force, so.
I don't think it's worth the time to work on it.
And again, your hands are being tied, that if you drink this Kool-Aid, two conditions would be this commitment to meet the student-staff ratio targets and commitment to sustain those savings, so saying you can't hire after you've reduced.
Right. I think it restricts the responsibilities of the board and the administration of each district.
Ready for a vote? How about a motion to approve? Not hearing a motion?
I'll make a motion. We can vote on it.
Yeah.
Sure. I make a motion to approve.
A second?
I'll second it, but I'll vote against it.
Makes it clear what the decision is.
Yeah, yeah. Let's do a show of hands on this one. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand.
Doesn't happen very much at the motion maker and the second, don't vote for him, but...
Because it's based on...
It's the same thing. It's the same thing. The first one stood, we got the same word.
Just defined it a little bit more.
Yeah. They got tricked.
Yeah.
All right. Well, given, if I get the opportunity to sort of explain where the board came down on this, I will. All right. We're down to other.
Do we have other two more? Fact finders?
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's still two more resolutions.
I thought that was like the big one. Okay. Now I gotta reopen that.
I have this right here.
I'm gonna do it this way. I'm back in action. Okay, sorry, he was on the next page.
An optimist, that's all.
Has anybody, has everybody had a chance to read the fact finder one?
Recently?
Yep.
Okay. Do we have any comments on this? Anybody like to speak up, those who work with fact finders?
Right.
I'll always say something, so.
All right.
I think this is wrong to tell fact finders how to do their job. They are professionals, that's why we hire them. Outside of the, and to say that you have to consider only X, Y, and Z, you are telling the fact finders how to do their job. And I think, again, this is not, this is not something that we should be doing. It prejudices the fact finders. It doesn't make them new... It doesn't make them neutral anymore.
Anybody else want to speak to this one?
It'd be helpful for those of us that aren't familiar with the process to hear more about it, because I don't know if this would be, make them more neutral or less neutral based on what is currently in practice.
So I think that this comes from a belief by a number of school boards that fact-finders, independent people who come in to sort of recommend a contract settlement, too often only base their recommendations on existing comparable teacher contracts or public school employee contracts. As opposed, I think that this is, the thought here is that they also need to be looking at the economic conditions of the community that they're in, what the average person living there may be expecting for salary and benefits, what the more regional rate of inflation is. That's, I think, where this comes from. There's a certain sort of disillusionment by some boards in the fact-finding process, and that the idea here is that you would direct, you would limit a fact-finder's ability, or you would direct a fact-finder more to look at certain characteristics. Thank you, Chris.
Yeah. I think that one of the things that I've found to be frustrating is that one of the things they do is they use comparables, which they determine to be other communities that they find to be similar, and they see what the agreement looks like there. So they, you know, they go out and they look at other districts' contracts, which are to be an indicator of what's fair here to do what was fair in some other place in the state. And I think the frustration that we see here is that we sit here locally and we negotiate what works for our district and what we're trying to accomplish here, and the needs and the wants and desires of our town and our constituents. And the real frustration is that there's a much different, more orchestrated strategy on the other side of the table, where it's, there's directors that run the negotiation side, are in charge of advising large swaths of the state. So there's one advisor or person that sort of has influence over that, and they can sort of use that strategy to allow a particular contract to move ahead quicker or slower than another. So it's sort of, when people talk about the uneven footing, it's about, we don't have much say in what's going on elsewhere. And if you're looking for things to compare to, the earlier ones that come out are the ones that people get compared to. And if you're a gatekeeper that has some say in how quickly that moves, then you can let ones come out that you want to push things a certain way. So I think that's why we'd like to see less of that and more of what's happening locally.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things that's being used as a legitimate measure of a community's ability to pay is whether the budget passes or not. There's some legitimate measures, and that, again, is being advanced by the VSPA as a way to measure a community's ability to pay. Like South Burlington's vote going against their budget, which had nothing to do with the financial situation there, had to do with the name of the mascot. And the fact-finder would have considered, would have had to consider that if there was a law out there that would say, this community can't afford to pay that. But it was actually about the mascot. So, again, I think that the fact-finders to be hired by both sides have to be neutral. And that to say that there is someone controlling the fact-finders, I think is disingenuous.
Move to approve, supporting this.
Sorry.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna just read it real quick. "The General Assembly should modify 16 VSA 2007 to require neutral fact-finders to consider only a statutory list of legitimate measures of a community's ability to pay, rather than a pattern of area salary and health benefits that purports to demonstrate financial wherewithal, but in fact does not." All those in favor, say aye.
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 Well, actually, we'll just by a show of hands. All those in favor, hands up, please. One, two, three, four, five. And those opposed, one, two, three, four.
I'm sort of neutral, but I'll oppose it. I can't, I can't, I can't...
So that only comes to nine, if you said five and four.
Yeah, well, I'll put me down as a reluctant nay.
Good.
That makes it tied.
That's a tie.
That's a tie.
Whoa.
It's reluctant nay.
Yeah.
Am I supposed to...
It's sort of like, yeah, I just can't get my hand around this to know how it would work. I just don't understand.
The fact is, is this would be a piece of legislation that I would predict would go nowhere.
Yeah, I would too.
Okay. Guidelines for reserve funds and budget surplus amounts. In the light of the goals of affordability, transparency, and accountability, the VSPA will work with the Agency of Education, the Vermont Superintendent's Association, and the Vermont Association of School Business Officials to establish guidelines on the appropriate amounts and uses of reserve funds and the treatment of budget surplus amounts. Guidelines should support best practices in amounts of establishment of and utilization of reserve funds. So I don't remember a lot, we talked a lot about this at all, didn't we?
And I would say, there was very little discussion on this, but wrestling, the amount of wrestling that we did on the reserve fund over the last couple of years, I think I would welcome some guidelines on how to do this. I actually support this resolution, because it does give us some, it does give us some guidelines as to what we can reserve and how we can reserve it, and that kind of stuff. It says guidelines, it doesn't say you have to do it this way, so.
Do either of our members of the VSA and VASBO have any comments?
I think, I mean, if they're working on guidelines, it's not gonna affect us necessarily. You know, I wouldn't want to be tied to a certain way we need to monitor our reserve funds. I think we have a pretty good handle on where we want to get to in terms of a reserve fund. We're not quite there yet in year one of our operation, but I think we have a goal of getting there, and how to use that along with thinking about capital funds and our capital reserve that we're using to take care of maintenance. So I don't see any issue with it. I don't, I'm not sure what it means.
And I'm not sure what prompted it.
I think there's, well, I know that there are, different districts account for budget surpluses in different ways, and some hold basically a running tab as they move from year to year, which is theoretically against statute, but some still do it. So I think this is trying to get at those districts. That's my opinion.
How about a motion to approve? Still moved? See. Victoria, you want the second on this one?
Sure.
Does that end all the discussion and questions?
No.
Okay. Is there any concern that initiating a guideline could lead to a more restrictive
policy or statute on something like this?
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that, you know, if a list of guidelines came out that was supported by the School Board Association, the Business Managers Association, the Superintendent's Association, that would convert to proposed legislation pretty easily.
Right.
But...
Any more than a study committee would?
Yeah.
Right. Well, I felt like that was the concern with the others, but it didn't seem like that was feeling like a concern with this one, where we would feel like we were tied to hold a certain amount of reserve funds or utilize our reserve funds in a certain timeframe or for a certain purpose. And I'm not sure how that would affect us going forward if that would be something that we would welcome, should this become more of a mandate.
At this point, it only speaks to guidelines.
We currently do have guidelines within statute for certain funds. And that's why four or five years ago, we converted, in a number of our districts, we converted from capital funds to reserve funds, because there's a timeframe in legislation about how long, I think it's three years, that those funds can sit there before they're used.
Can you, what you said...
Me?
No. Josh.
Peter.
Peter, yeah. Peter, 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 Peter.
What is that?
I was trying to think of how I was gonna, describe what you were saying there. I guess I don't quite understand that, a running tab.
So, we have a budget surplus. We had one last year that was $1.2 million. Some districts take that back to their board. Well, I think the board is also complacent in the matter, but they say we have a $900,000 surplus. What are we gonna do with it? So they hold that $300,000 basically in their pocket, in essence, as an unseen, untransparent contingency, if you will, as opposed to bringing it forward and saying, this is our actual surplus. So I think they're trying, in my opinion, this is trying to get a handle on some rules on how you have to handle. There are some statutory rules anyway, but I don't think they have any teeth to them, so I think that's what they're trying to develop to get there.
How much did you guys save in that?
Because we are 100% transparent.
This would be the moment to...
We're a model.
Tell us. There's 2.2 million hiding inside.
Well, then, there's two sides to this, because there's the one side that you described, trying to deal with that type of scenario, if that in fact is happening, and the other side, which says that we, as a school district, should decide ourselves what we, how we manage it, which we have done over the years.
Right.
And to me, I side on this side of managing it myself, rather than to have specific guidelines in order to deal with that. I, to me, I would think, that to me, you're not dealing with the, you're not even talking about it. So I understand where, because the word transparency is in this thing, right? But I would be prone not to support this because of the local, the district is already doing it and we can do it as well as they can.
Further questions?
I just have a comment. That may be this district, but if you're looking across the state, not every district may have the integrity to do that. So it sounds like some have...
Well, maybe, but then that restricts us potentially, I guess.
And accountants can be very creative, so even if you have laws, they can still get around them.
So what you're saying, Nick, is that even though there are guidelines, if we have good enough accountants, we'll be able to...
You will.
Particularly a well-advised.
Yeah, yeah.
You will.
Could this, if this reined in some of the districts that maybe are not handling things as well, could this proposed guideline suggestion help the overall state budget so that it would therefore then have a positive benefit to districts such as ours?
I think it would be negligible.
Okay. I still don't know how I'm gonna vote. I don't understand it enough. I don't...
You don't have to vote.
Okay.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of this resolution, please raise your hand.
You just can't win.
Who was joining, Steve?
Just Steve.
Peter, Peter.
One, two, three. Chris, are you abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
All right. Four, five, six.
Yeah, this is one of those, it's hard to...
It's hard to go either way.
Yeah, I don't really...
Oh, I don't either.
We'll let you make that call when you get there.
So, Peter, I had one approval, one yes, six nay, and three extensions. Is that correct?
Uh, no.
Two extensions.
Two for, two aye, six nay, two extension.
Okay. Or are you an aye, is that why?
I was aye.
Well, then you're not all alone.
Stephen and I, Stephen and I are... Well, I'm in sync, right, yeah. At least on this resolution.
All right. Well, now, we are at a point of our...
Others.
Anything else to come before the meeting tonight? Steve has been approached by a couple of people who wanted to know how to come before the board. I want to just describe...
Yeah, I've been approached by two different community groups that said that they would like to make presentations to the board, and I wanted to bring it to your attention. And I said that I would check with you as to whether you were interested in hearing from them. One is a comment about solar installations on schools, and I know that there was some interest in it. A little while ago, some students made a proposal, and so I didn't know what to tell this person. And the second was, apparently, there is some settlement out there for Volkswagen around the fuel efficiency stuff.
Oh, and school buses?
Yeah, about school buses, and encouraging us to promote electric school buses instead of the biodiesel or whatever the, so, anyway, I just said I would bring it to you, see if you were interested in hearing from these people, and I will tell them what you want, whatever you want to pass back to them.
They have electric school buses?
Should it go through...
I'm not interested.
I would say, I think that a proposal for a facility issue would go to, would go to the facilities staff to discuss first, and they can bring it to the board if they'd like.
Especially if it becomes a budgetary component, all right, which, you save money over time and all of the same type of thing, for both of those issues, actually.
Yeah. Well, am I correct in saying we don't maintain a fleet of school buses?
That's correct.
Which is what I...
Maintain one.
Which is what I said. We don't, actually, we contract ours, so maybe the person you should approach is...
That's right.
So...
Right.
But trouble the first student headquarters and my old man or something.
Yeah. Anyway, they asked me to approach the board. I did so.
Yeah. Steve, anything else to come before the board tonight? Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
I'll second that.
Adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
It's gonna be a sick conversation.
I'll second that.